You ready?
And the bomb fell out. And that would have been a normal growth rate, you know. Good to see you. Thank you.
All right. Want to welcome everyone tonight to the Zephyr Hills City Council. It's Monday, March 25th. It is a little after six, 6:06. May I please have the roll call?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith.
Here.
Ken Burgess.
Here.
Mayor Monson.
Here.
Steve Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Matthew Maggert. William Poe.
Here.
All right, thank you. And if we could rise for the invocation that's going to be given by Stephen Ezra. Is, okay. Stephen, and then we'll follow up with the pledge.
Thank you. Please join me in a spirit of prayer. God of us all, we pray that you would bless now those who gather in this place. Give the gifts of discernment where needed, the gifts of wisdom where needed, give the gifts of vision where needed. To those who lead here, grant the patience of cooperation with one another. For those who debate here this evening, grant them clarity of thought. And to those who make decisions, give them the courage of truth. We pray that you would bless the members of this city council and give them the gift of oversight that they might honor your will as they strive for our city. Guide them as they work towards the purpose of shaping the civic lives of our citizens. And unite, all of us, with all people of goodwill, both in this place and beyond, in order that Zephyr Hills might continue to be a place of hope and fulfillment. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor Ezra. Thank you for that prayer. Can some, we turn the house lights on? All right, again, I want to welcome everyone to the council meeting tonight. There are agenda items that we'll go over. If you want to speak to one, please speak at the time it's presented. If you want to speak on something else, please sign up with our clerk, Lori Hellman, right over here to my left, and we'll get you on the agenda. With that, and also just make sure your phone's off, if you could, please. With that, we'll go into the first, to the mayor's items, actually.
Yeah, we're going to have chief come up and introduce our first item.
Good evening. Derek Brewer, police chief, city of Zephyr Hills. I kind of just want to give an update in reference to consolidation of dispatch. Back in February of 21, we had a workshop. And some of the benefits that we discussed were greater situational awareness, armed with information to better serve the public, improved interoperability, more efficient, profound change to how emergency services interact with the public, improved officer safety, and removed redundancy. Some of those challenges we discussed were, it's complex, it's multi-dimensional, and it's time-consuming. Obviously, we are here in March of 2024, and I am still giving you updates. But the good news is, is that we're getting closer. So my conclusion from the analysis that I presented back on February 15, 2021, was that full consolidation was the optimal alternative for future of, the future of telecommunications at ZPD. And following reasons were, even though the initial cost of equipment and software will be costly, sharing future expenses will likely provide long-term savings. We've never sold this as a savings measure, but I do believe that in the long term, with the update of equipment that would have been required for our system and sharing those expenses, it would be a benefit to us. The process is lengthy, time-consuming, but sharing standard technology, equipment, and protocols will improve emergency coordination. Full integration may be the best option to improve relations and enhance cooperation with partnering agencies. I think the fact that Captain Ross joined me here today is a sign that that cooperation has already begun, and it's pretty strong. The advantages to the city, department, and community outweigh the loss of any lost autonomy. So after three years of discussions, planning, budgeting, et cetera, we anticipate to go live the second week of May. However, that could be delayed. That is tentative. But based on discussions with the county, our report writings, our records management system, our CAD system, new CAD system, we're hoping to have that all ready and ready to go in second week of May. So I asked Captain Ross to join me today to help answer any questions that you might have concerning the project from the county's perspective and what members of the community might expect once we do go live.
Right.
Hi. Counsel. To introduce Justin Ross, captain with the Pasco County Sheriff's Office over our operational readiness division. So just to start, you know, to kind of echo the chief, and give a little bit of an update, and then I'll answer any questions that you guys may have. So the chief and his team have been amazing partner throughout this process, and it is a long and lengthy process. And I think what complicated and may have extended some of the time was not on the city's side, it was actually on the county and the sheriff's office side. So what was also happening during this time is the sheriff's office went out to search for a new report-writing software. So our current vendor is Central Square One Solution, which we've switched to back in 2013 from the CAD, 2014 for RMS. And on the RMS side, full transparency, it's been a rocky relationship with that vendor. On the CAD side, not as bad, right? I think with any technology, as you guys know, there's going to be hurdles because it's technology, right? It doesn't, for whatever reason, it seems to break down when you need it most. But from the CAD side, it was going well. On the RMS side, it wasn't. So we had made the decision that we were going to go look for a new records management system. And, you know, we've evaluated several different platforms out there. We convened a panel to go out and look at all the different, our one requirement for looking at a new system was that it be cloud-based, because we know that that cloud infrastructure is going to make it the most agile for future growth and development. And that was the issue that we were working with, with our current RMS vendor. So we did put, we put together a panel, we went out, evaluated a lot of vendors. That was the one requirement that we had for them. And the other aspect was, we wanted to look and try to consolidate a lot of processes, right? Improving efficiency is going to make us more effective as organizations. So we landed with Axon Records. If you're familiar, I know the city as well, TASER is Axon. Body worn cameras, Axon, right? So a lot of the technology is there, and they also have the report management system. So the ability, they have records and standards, which is more of like that accountability or reporting aspect of the paperwork. So, you know, if there's an agency crash or a pursuit, a use of force, right? All of that administrative documentation, in addition to your incident reports and investigations. So those are the two pieces that Axon brings. And that allowed us to bring and consolidate all of everything digital in one place. So your police reports and records are in one place, as so as your BWC and your digital evidence. And then your only other left with is your physical evidence. So that's consolidating things, and that's improving the relationship as well with the state attorney's office and the ease of prosecution of cases. So we're definitely excited to get there. It is a long process, as the chief said, because we want to make sure that we get it right. One thing that I will say that we learned from a sheriff's office in our implementation with Central Square is that age-old adage of you want to measure twice and cut once, and not rush to that. So, you know, we had some growing pains when we went live with Central Square. I actually ended up getting reassigned to IT for six months as a troubleshoot help desk to help people through and liaison with Central Square and try to build and fix things that were missed during the go-live. So we are, for the better, having experienced that and are working through to make sure that this transition is a lot smoother. So there's been a lot there. As far as the go-lives go, right, the chief and the PD, they've been on it. So they're ready to go live, and we're still, we're going to be probably September, October, before we actually implement Axon Records. But that, obviously, we're not letting hold up, hold up the overall migration. So where we're at is, as it stands from the city perspective, you guys are done and ready. It's really waiting on the county. So there's two main pieces. There's the overall dispatch consolidation. And so basically having, where citizens are calling, the centralized dispatch will be answering and handling those calls for service, generating the call for service, and dispatching that out. So there's that piece. And then there's one piece for Axon Records, which is the integration of CAD, which is computer-aided dispatch. So there's the integration of that CAD and Axon Record. So this way, when your officers are pulling case numbers in the CAD, it's transitioning and bringing some of that information over, telling them, hey, you have this report to write, some basic information. So the county last week had asked us, the biggest hurdle that we are now trying to get over is that, what does that integration between the CAD and Axon Records look like? And there's a bunch of different ways to build integrations, and we're striving to make sure that we have the best, reliable, most stable integration. So that resides on building a replication server. And the county was not, they didn't have the staff, the database analysts and stuff like that, to do that. So the sheriff's office does, and we are helping them through that process over the next couple of weeks, so we can get that and remove that as a to-do and as a pending item. Aside from that, the last piece is going to be us helping the city with the laptop builds to install all the public safety software that the officers are going to need. And then we can schedule training. And so the sheriff's office is going to help provide the training for the MCT, which stands for Mobile Communications Terminal. That's the box in the car that receives all the stuff from CAD. And we will help provide the officers' training in that piece. So we'll train the agency and train the trainers. And then the county will provide the training on CAD for the employees that will be helping out in the dispatch front. So as law enforcement, the boots on the ground, they utilize the MCT more so than CAD. CAD's where you write up the call for service, send it out, and the MCT is the officer of response. So we divided and divvied up those responsibilities between the county and dispatch, so we get the best people training on those tasks, and we'll be training on MCT, which, you know, will be, as soon as we get those, the software installed, we'll be able to help facilitate that. So it's been an amazing journey, to say the least. We are definitely excited to have Zephyr Hills coming on board, right? And so that's one of the benefits. State City's been on with us for a few years now. Port Ritchie has been on the same CAD and MCT, not necessarily the same dispatch. We are trying to get them on. But since your guys' leadership in joining Dade City in this venture, we have got the commitments from New Port Ritchie. They will be consolidating as well. And we are very close to getting, finishing up the contract for Port Ritchie. So this will be probably the very first time since pen and paper that all law enforcement agencies have been on the same system in this county. So it's a very exciting time. We will also be putting forth some effort to make sure that we combine the databases from all agencies into a search engine where all of the officers, we can share the same information in the county. So we know that the criminals know no boundaries in our county, and it's about time that our law enforcement does the same, right? So it's exciting. We're happy, like I said, the chief and his team have been fantastic partners to work with, and hopefully we'll get to see all the benefits out of it. So really appreciate it, and if there's any questions about anything, I'm happy to answer them.
Councilman Proctor?
Well, I just have a comment. We have been working on this for a long time, and I'm very excited. I think it's going to benefit the citizens. I think reaction time to calls, you'll have more information now that where you guys are sharing the information, I think that's a big blessing. So you'll know. I'm just really excited about it, and I think it's going to benefit the citizens.
Yeah, a couple of things that we've seen to that point, you know, even from Dade City, right? Because they are on the same dispatch. So we hear their calls, and we can see their units and their calls. And so oftentimes, we have their officers backing up our deputies on calls that are right around the city limits, or our officers are going into the city limit, our deputies are backing up their officers.
And that's the other thing, the safety to the other officers. You're all working together, and that's great, because if you need backup or if they need backup, that's a big deal.
Yeah, it's a force multiplier, for sure. And the one thing, you know, I want to point out, because I know, you know, I've heard, and I'm sure you guys are probably hearing rumors that this is the first step of, you know, the sheriff's office wants to take over the police department. And that couldn't be any further from the truth. And that's why I want to make sure, you know, from the sheriff's words to my ears, like that is not our intent, right? And we've seen that and proven that. We can point to the success that we've seen in Dade City. It is not our intent to try to take over. We want to work with the cities and build that cohesive relationship. And this is a strong relationship that we've been building as well throughout that process, and we're looking forward to seeing that continue to grow amongst the teams out there.
Councilman.
I have a question, kind of technical, which is scary, because I don't really understand that. You mentioned the program you're using is Action or Acton?
Axon.
Axon.
Yes.
But what does Central Square have to do with it, or is that a previous one you did?
Good question. So we actually, we're going to have two vendors now. So up until, well, now, really, we've had, we were with Central Square. Their product was called One Solution. Absolute, probably misnomer, I guess, on that, right? Good marketing there. But so it was One Solution. So we add them for CAD, for RMS, for the records management system. And then we also had them for employee, their public administration, which was like human resources and finance and all of that stuff. So our agency, we've, after the search for platforms out there for everything, we've decided we're moving to Oracle away from the, for the public admin aspect. So we're leaving One Solution, Central Square for that. And for RMS, we have transitioned to Axon, which is the organization, and theirs is just called Axon Records. So we will stay with Central Square One Solution CAD. So you will see, we are still a customer of Central Square's for the CAD piece. As I had mentioned, they really, they have a solid CAD. There's a lot of awesome features and functionality in there. And from a smaller jurisdictional perspective, you guys will probably be able to even utilize a lot of those things far better than the sheriff's office will from a larger organization, because some things are harder to manage on a grander scale than you have on a smaller scale. So there's a lot of things that we'll be able to show that even though your, the agency is consolidating from a macro perspective, it still separates out different tenants and features that you can manage as system administrators. And we're able to help provide that training and show what you can customize in of your agency. It's not just you have to have what the sheriff's office has. And that's what a lot of the work that the county's been doing, the chief and his team's been working on, is providing them, is what are those little unique things in your zones and responses and things like that, that you can build out and customize, unique to your organization? So the Central Square CAD, long answer long, and I apologize, but so we're staying with Central Square CAD, and we're moving to Axon RMS.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say that, you know, when we first started talking about this, I think there was some concern that there was going to be a loss of jobs in our dispatch. And I think that the chief has done a great job of really kind of integrating that opportunity, making sure that those folks knew that they would have a place with you. The other thing is that I just want to make a comment, and that is that I don't think I've ever seen the relationship between our sheriff and our police department better. I mean, I'm so proud of the way that that, you know, the way that you folks are working together and the improvement in communication. But the bottom line is that this is going to save lives. It's going to save time, and it really is the right decision, I think, for our community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And that's, it's due to his leadership there.
Yes.
He's been fantastic.
Councilman Burgess?
And I just want to echo what everyone else has already said. And, you know, it's been a pretty long process since we got into it in earnest, but we've actually discussed it for many years. And I think it's going to improve efficiency, of course, but the biggest takeaway is going to be the safety to the public and the safety to our officers. And I think that's the big factor in all this, that I really appreciate. So, and thank you for coming in, filling us in on it.
Mayor, you want to say anything on it, or?
I just wanted to thank you for hitting that head-on, that you're not here to take over our police department. And I know that. I knew that personally. So thank you for hitting that and reassuring our public of that.
Yes, absolutely.
We love our police department.
Yes.
Okay? So we, you know, we love our police department, okay?
And great job, guys. Great job working together. I know it's been a long process, and I know the thing, everything's good when it's going good, but when you have issues, that's when you find out how the relationship is. So to be on this for as long as you have, great job. And there's going to be rough times as we integrate, but I know with the working relationship we have, we're going to work through it. So, and we're all supportive of it. I think it's safe. It's the thing we needed to do way back, so I'm glad we're doing it now, so.
Thank you, chief.
And do you need any action from us, or that was just an update? Well, thank you so much, and thank you for taking your time to come over.
No, it's a pleasure. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Very good.
Very informative.
All right, Mayor, you got a couple more, right?
Yeah. CJ, OJ, Eric, and John, come on up.
So our city has received Plant Operations Excellent Awards from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. It says 2023 Plant Operations Excellent Award. In furtherance of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's goal for ensuring safe wastewater for all people in Florida, this certificate is to award, is hereby awarded to the city of Zephyr Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant in recognition of the outstanding operation through dedicated professionalism. The award of the, will be given in Haynes City. So it's presented this 12th day of March, 2024. We have one for the wastewater, and then we have almost the exact thing, but for safe drinking water. So we're very excited and very proud of you and proud of your guys and all the hard work that you do. So.
CJ, CJ.
I hate that thing.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, get your picture ready.
Congrats, guys.
Thank you.
Good job, gentlemen.
And if you don't mind, these operations, or treatment plant operators, not operators, but the plants themselves, awards are due to the dedication of the people that we have working for the city. And one thing I want to point out, this award was over for the past year. And for the wastewater treatment facility to get this award, it's, I'm telling you, it's something that was not expected, because we are down four positions at the treatment plant itself. We have three people that staff the treatment plant, we're supposed to have seven. So this is done by, in OJ's direction also, to make sure our wastewater is safe for the environment and for public health. So I just wanted to point out, and we all know how CJ runs his department with water. It's great. Just reiterate, Florida does have the best taste in drinking water through the Florida section of AWWA. And we're going in June to Anaheim, California for the contest for the United States. So just reminding that these folks do what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah. Congratulations. I know you do a lot of extra, and I know we all appreciate the effort you put into it. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, guys. And I know this is just a piece of the team, too. There's people underneath you, and thank you for all you do. You can tell, if the water's ever not flowing, that's when we know, that's when you hear about it. But we don't ever hear about it, hardly ever. So thank you so much for what you do.
And John and OJ got to work on their beards a little bit, too.
What was that?
You guys got to work on your beards. You and OJ.
You have one more item, Mayor, right?
All right. We have Dr. Stovall and Vicki. They're going to talk about ZEDC work plan.
So good evening. Thank you for having us. The last time I was up here, I think I was talking about ZEDC and getting another extension of our contract. Thank you for that. And I know that was, it is a 12-month operation, and we kind of end each operational year with the economic summit in this room. And so we did that, and it went well. And so we really kind of have a year-to-date, and as our preparation to get ready for the contract renewal, we understood that probably we need to do these updates more than once a year, so that's really why I'm here tonight. I will tell you, and I know, because we were together, that, you know, one of the things that we do is we help with Tallahassee things. And I know that we had a good trip there. We were joined by our colleague Kendall DeFord this time, and that was a first trip for him, and he had a good time, and I think contributed to the whole thing being successful. We had the first-ever Pigs in Sea Hills downtown. And you know, that's not exactly a ZEDC thing, but it certainly is an economic driver thing. And that's why we decided to put it on this list tonight. And after action reports and getting, talking with all the people, the vendors and people that helped make it go, everything I've heard is it was a great thing to bring it downtown, so we're glad we did it. And, you know, like every time you do something, you learn things, and it'll be better next year. So that's good. We had a wonderful trade show Saturday before last, down off 54 and Allen Road. And about 20 companies who do business here came to the parking lot, put a tent, and brought their best smiles and their business cards, and they had a day of getting to know people and people getting to know them. And I spent a little time there myself, and I was very impressed. And so I think that's a good model for helping support businesses in town. And the other thing that's good about that is typically when we do events, and when Main Street does events, they're not anywhere except downtown. And so this was a way to put some, sort of some sunshine on that part of town and help the businesses there, and I think that was a great success. And as you may recall, we are, as far as a kind of research piece that we're wanting to do for this current year, we're thinking, what is the best way to help stimulate people getting a job here? And so we're hoping that experience at the trade show will be something we can kind of build on to help with that idea as well. We have our every-other-month stakeholders' meeting, which is really our citizen advisory group, and it is a broad group of people, and we've been meeting here in this room, so thank you for that. We had, I think, introduced some things that I think most people were not aware of. I don't know how many people know, we actually are a town that supports a mushroom farm, but we are, and sell these mushrooms out of Zephyr Hills. Other people eat our mushrooms. And so that's a really cool thing that people wouldn't have known. We had the new owner of Skydive City, and I know he's been in front of you. He's a very dynamic guy, and I think he's going to be a great asset to the community. And then Vicki sent out an invitation today, I believe, our next stakeholders' meeting, week after next, is going to feature transportation, because, you know, that comes up over and over and over. And I know you understand how it works, but I don't think everybody on our advisory group knows how it works. So Vicki has invited NPO staff. Scott Ferry is going to come, and Scott is a very knowledgeable, very good presenter, and he's going to spend some time kind of walking through how the transportation thing works, because we all know we can be a really great in the city, but we're surrounded by the county. And so we need to have that information and connection so we can get things done. So that's coming up, and certainly you're all invited to come to that if you wish. I don't know what you have to do for Sunshine Law, but you can come, as far as we're concerned. So we hope you will be there. We don't vote on anything, so it should be fine. Then we have our normal array of things that we don't think about much. normal array of things that we don't think about much, because we just have them in the background. You know, we have our website, the marketing website, that, that they have to do updates from time to time, clearly Zephyr Hills, and, and then the various publications. And those are on the website. Occasionally, somebody wants one, and so, they'll print them off in staff on demand if somebody wants one. So, that's what we're up to. Um, we had, um, when we don't do stakeholders, the other months, we do what we call our Steering Committee, which is more of a staff-level thing, and we have really great discussions there, and we're usually joined by, uh, Tom Ryan from PUDC, and, you know, he, he does that out-of-the-county marketing for us, and for the whole county, and he provides a lot of insight. So, we, we have very good discussions there. Hopefully, we'll continue. Happy to answer questions, and if I don't know it, Vicki is here, she might know it, so.
Questions? That's what's been in.
I just thank you, Dr. Stovall, for coming forward. I, I appreciate you making the effort to, to keep us informed and bring things forward, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Dr. Stovall, thank you again for your service to the ZEDC and to our chamber. Um, you know, one of the things we were talking about in the CRA meeting earlier was to be sure that site selectors know about the grants that are available for our downtown district, particularly for, you know, restaurants and other, and other potential users of these commercial grants. So, you know, we want to make sure that when Mr. Ryan meets someone that might be a good fit for us, that we, that we're talking to them. Thank you.
Absolutely. And, and I know he helps us with that, and, and he works with Billy quite, quite well.
Anything else?
All right, guys.
Ready, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all? All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, the next item on the agenda are the consent items. And there are, let's see, four of them.
Mr. President, I move to approve our consent items, numbers 2.1 through 2.4.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve all four consent items.
I need that we're.
All right, that's, I thought that it was, um, no, that, that's fine. I'm going to, I'll get with you on one of them, but that's, it's fine. Um, all in favors, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Um, next is a Planning Director's Report. Hunter, you're up, bud.
Good evening, everyone. Hunter Gearhart, Historic Preservation Planner for City of Zephyr Hills. So, I'm here to, thank you, Lori, um, to pass through the historic grant facade funding for Manolo's Italiano over on Fifth Avenue. Um, as you can see from the before and after pictures here, it's a little smaller up there, but, uh, this is what it looks like now. That's the view from Fifth Ave. And then, um, this is the new door compared to the old one. Uh, the improvements here went for a lot of the trim and paint on the windows, as well as redoing the entire door. That was a max grant of $2,500. It's been done in the historically accurate way, um, so it matches the other side. Um, then staff recommends approval of the distribution of funding there.
All right, and, and, and this is a, a grant, a matching, a grant that's a reimbursed grant, because the money's already been spent, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and improvement's been made. Any questions?
I have a question, probably of Joe. Are, are there plans to open soon? Are you reopening?
Yeah, come, yeah, that would be great, Joe. Just give us an update on.
Yeah, we'd like to hear an update.
That would be great. Just your name and address for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again here, and it's a pleasure being here amongst you all. Um, well, my name is Joe Abed, proprietor of Manolo's Italian Restaurant, the building and the business. Uh, most of you know me, I've only been here 25 years. Um, so, uh, COVID hit, everybody went through a depression, everybody, you know, went through the whole process. Um, I had a little water leak that turned, that looked like a disaster, but it wasn't. Um, I had just repaired the ceiling on the right side where I started, just repaired it, not even four, five months, so we had to redo that. To make a long story short, uh, the building is much better looking than it was. All those repairs were needed. The city twisted my arm a little bit, but it needed to be done, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the building department and, and everybody that's been very wonderful with me, to be honest with you. Um, so, we brought it up to good looks. We had a few people interested. It don't look like the good Lord wants me to sell. It's just the way it is. Uh, we've had so many people, we came close, but it didn't work. So, now, uh, the place has been, um, closed for a while, and I have the, the urge to cook again, so the energy's back. So, we're going to reopen. As of now, I'm done with all my inspections with the city. Everything is passed, everything has been done. I just got approved with the State of Florida for the floor plans, because the building was closed for more than 18 months, I had to submit new floor plans. They got approved. We are just waiting on an inspection upon my call. I have a few more things to do, but you guys, since you're not in the restaurant business, things take much longer. When you're not in a business, you don't understand. For example, menus are not that easy as you think, and programming of computers, and from A to Z, it's a long process. So, I'm hoping, and I'm looking forward, I don't want to exaggerate, but maybe a month, two months at the most, the doors should be operational. Yeah.
Joe, we're, we're missing our white table restaurant, restaurant. We are, especially for my clients, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. It took a little bit, but some people go on journeys in life that are not easy to understand for others. So, this is, this was the situation. But, I'm in a much better spirit, and, uh, to be quite honest with you, what lifted my spirit is all this growth. So, if there was a restaurant, Steve, that should have been open, now would have been the time to open. But anyways, it's been a blessing, and I've, I've had a wonderful time.
Good.
I appreciate Zephyr Hills, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
We're looking forward to you being back open, so we can come over there and eat, so.
We're looking forward to the linguine.
Very good.
Should we put our order in now?
Well, key.
Are you taking orders?
Um, we can.
I'll call you.
I cook at home.
Well, Joe, thank you. And, uh, any, anything else? Any questions for Hunter? I know he's eager to answer some questions. Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of this item. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good job, Hunter.
Right, guys. Uh, I figured I would just take this time really quick to, um, update you on a couple other things.
Sure.
We have a new historic survey that's, uh, in the works. We're looking at expanding the historic district, hopefully opening up that, uh, that historic facade funding to more homes, more people, um, as well as filling out the remaining seats on the Historic Preservation Board. So, those are a couple things coming down the pipeline.
Great.
I have a, I have a question for you then, too. Uh, we're going to start working on doing something with the depot as well, right?
Yes, yep, but, yeah, we are, correct.
Good, good answer, Hunter.
Thank you, Dr. Spina, yeah.
Anything else?
And the barracks museum, too.
Well, Hunter, great job. Seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, City Manager's Report.
Sir, uh, item 4.1, uh, the Florida National Guard received a state appropriation to construct an armory in Zephyr Hills. We all know that, uh, at the, um, they chose the site at Sixth Avenue and South Avenue, um, north of that intersection. They purchased 25 acres. Unfortunately, that piece of property doesn't have paved access to Sixth Avenue. It does, but it's through the neighborhood. Um, and so, um, for the city to facilitate that development, um, we requested a state appropriation, which was granted in the 2023 budget. Uh, the, the project is currently under design, um, and once we own the property, it can then go out to bid, and the bid, or the design, and is, holy cow, the design is for the construction of an access road from South Avenue, or Sixth Avenue, north about 1,300 feet. It'll include a water sewer line that provide access not only to the armory, but then also the possibility of, of opening up, um, additional industrial lands owned by other individuals. Uh, based on city policy, the city can pay a maximum of 10% above the appraised value. The appraisals came in at 450 and five, just over 501,000. Uh, therefore, the purchase price of 400,000 is well within the city's purchasing policies. The purchase of the property is covered in the appropriation. Um, just as a side note, uh, the facility, the, the guard facility is estimated to begin construction, uh, in January of 2025, and it should take about 18 months. Um, with that, staff rec, staff recommends approval of the purchase of 4.8 acres, uh, from Zephyr Rail Industrial Park, uh, for total cost of $400,000. Any questions?
And we're buying that so that we can continue on with that project?
Correct, yeah. So, we have to own the property before, so because it's a state appropriation, DOT has told us that we have to own the property before we can move forward with the bid documents. So, the road has been designed, uh, and we're just waiting on the clear letter, and we'll get that clear letter once the city owns the property.
Thanks.
And then, this is, this isn't city funding, it's, we're, we're being reimbursed for that 400,000.
Correct, it's state appropriation. We have to expend the funds, and then we submit it to DOT, and it gets reimbursed. So, it is not coming out of the city's, um, pocket, so to speak. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? And really, like you said, it opens up that corridor for other potential developments, so, and we, it was great to get the, the appropriation to do so, so, okay?
The city manager, I mean, the city manager, the city attorneys looked at this, and everything's good, right?
Right, yes, sir. Yep, he was the one who drew up, or his office drew up the sales agreement.
I move for approval of business item 4.1.
I have a motion and a second for approval of business item 4.1. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, City Attorney's Report. Billy, you going to fill in?
Um, sure.
All right, I can, I can read it, doesn't matter.
I think, I think Planning Department's going to fill in for me.
Oh, come on, yeah, I'm sorry.
I can give you a really condensed version.
I guess we.
Do you want my version, or you want Todd's version?
No, we, we want Todd's version.
Okay, all right. What are you saying? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, well, yeah, that part I can do. Uh, ordinance number 1474-24, An Ordinance of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, amending the City of Zephyr Hills Code of Ordinances, Section 150.01, and amending Table 1 of Section 7.003.01, Section 1, amending the existing de minimis and traffic impact analysis, traffic study requirements, and Section 10, amending the transportation mitigation, turn lane criteria, and roadway and intersection improvements criteria, providing for repeal or codification in an effective date.
Thank you.
Well, with all the growth and development, staff is trying to be very proactive. We listen to the concerns that council and the mayor have had, and, you know, trying to do what we can do. And two of those steps we're taking with the first reading of the ordinance tonight, and that, that is amending our traffic study requirements, our turn lane requirements, and, and the creation of a hotspots map. There's a number of other minor technical amendments we're putting into the traffic study requirements as well. And if you recall back, a couple meetings ago, we had Kim Lee Horn, a couple of our representatives there, traffic engineers that worked with staff to create the, the modifications that are before you tonight. And, I mean, we could bring up the, the hotspots map. Is that on the, um, here's the hotspots map, and of course, as you know, what we presented before at the planner report, we've identified a hotspot, uh, locations and zones, and, uh, the, the dots represent hotspot locations, and then we also created a hotspot zone, and that's the area highlighted in blue at the very top. And the reason I wanted to do that was, is we're going to task Kim Lee Horn to look at that entire area bordering from Purdy Pond on the south, Cossack Road on the north, 301 on the, the west, and, uh, Wire Road, um, on the, the east. Uh, we're, we're going to have him look at that entire area, even inside the, the shopping center of Zephyr Commons. What can we do to maximize the efficiency, safety, uh, of that entire zone? And, uh, ju, just so you know, the, the areas in green, um, th, those were hotspots that were, uh, brought up. They probably weren't as significantly, uh, prioritized, but they're, those were areas, a number of them are, are state roadways, but they're important enough that we wanted to, to include them on the hotspots map. I think Councilman Wilk, Wilkinson brought up the, the Fifth Avenue and Court Street, which I, yeah, wholeheartedly agree that we need some turn lanes there, and we, just because that's an area in green, we're, we're going to talk with, uh, Pasco County and the state to see about opportunities to, to, to work on that intersection. Uh, there is some good news I, I heard as of Friday, uh, coming, we feel, from Pasco County on Geiger Road. Once we get the full details on that, I'll, I'll share that with, with the, the entire group. But, uh, we didn't have our Kim Lee Horn folks attend tonight. I suggested they didn't need to make the trip, but if there are comments or issues, um, that we can't answer, they can certainly come back for the adoption public hearing. Really, the, the traffic study, we're making a couple minor tweaks. You either do a TIS, that's a traffic impact study for less than 100 peak hour trips for new developments. And then, if you're above that, you do a TIA, that's a traffic impact analysis. And that's for the bigger projects, either a site plan or rezoning, or future land use. And the, the other thing that's incorporated that's very unique, I'm not sure of any other place that has this, but if, on the TIS, TIA's, larger projects, i, if you're within a mile of one of these hotspot areas or zones, then that provides us the opportunity to look at opportunities to make improvements within those hotspots and hotspot zones. And we're not specifying what that would be, because every, one of those could be a little bit different. But, and the only thing you don't see in the ordinance is, um, there, there's a, a table, you probably remember from the presentation made by the consultants, uh, where we're really reducing the number of, uh, peak hour trips for left turn lanes. We, I, I talked with the consultants, they told us about, uh, Plant City, I think Tampa, Hillsborough County, they got much lower standard, and that's, that's what we're using. So, I think that kind of summarizes what we're doing.
I just want to point out, uh, that we have funding in the budget for these hotspots, too.
Yes. And kind of what the step is, that, of course, Kim Lee Horn's eager to get to work for us, but I said, well, we're fin, we wanted to finalize the hotspots map, get the ordinance approved. The next step would be is Billy and I will meet, and we'll talk about priorities, probably where we want to start. You know, I think we do need to look at Purdy Pond, I think that's designed for a dual left turn southbound lane. We, we know we're going to need that with the additional multifamily coming, but certainly we can look at others as well. I think we're looking at Geiger Road, of course, but, yeah, that would be the next step, is coming up a task work order on those projects we want to get started with.
Councilman Burgess?
And Todd, in, in, looking at this previously, there was some language in there about, um, basically, us being able to look at these analyses and these studies from a safety aspect and efficiency, and you kind of brought up a little bit, so like, if it's within one mile, we could, is that language still in there, where we can kind of like, you know, when those, when those, when those analyses come back, they're going to, they're going to say something most likely different than what we're going to anticipate?
Yeah.
So, um, as long as that language is still in there, where we have the ability to look at things and, and make adjustments, I guess, if you want to call it, from there.
Yes, we have that language in there about, for, again, the TIA's, the, that's 100 gross PM peak hour trips, traffic study, uh, the TIA require, uh, trip generation, turn lane analysis, hotspot locations and zones analysis. So, staff will be working with our consultants when a project falls within that category to, to look at opportunities. And that, that's why it's good to get started on some of the, the next steps on. It, it could be anything from, maybe you want a bus stop there, maybe you want, uh, better lighting, it, it could be turn lanes, roundabout, you know, a lot of different, uh, scenarios for improvements based on each hotspot location.
I was just going to say, I, I'm, I'm glad we're being proactive about this, because, you know, these, most of these roads are not, they're not city roads, and so, they're, we.
Right.
And, and I have to tell you that I've been out, um, you know, I've been communicating with our residents, I've been communicating with our, uh, state representatives and our county representatives and, um, elected officials, and they are more than willing to help us find the funding for these, for these projects to help our residents, because it's a win for everyone if we can get these issues resolved. And, you know, one of the things that I explain to folks is that, you know, developers want to come into the city, they want to bring their development into the city because of the, um, accessibility to our trained planning staff and the, um, and, you know, compression of time, that they save money doing that. But it also improves our opportunity to negotiate these additional requirements, like, uh, Councilman Burgess mentioned, mentioned that, you know, it doesn't matter that it's not. Burgess mentioned, that, you know, it doesn't matter that it's not right next to your, to your property, it's, it may be a quarter mile or half mile away, we still have to resolve the issues that are holistic, the approach has to be more holistic. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna make sure that we're, or ensure that we're proactive in this, and I, and I'm curious to how we initiate a hotspot construction project.
Well, I think we start with identifying what the improvement is, and we work with Kim Lee Horn, we'll do a task work order for each particular hotspot location, and then we'll get together and review and assess what those improvements are gonna be, and then we'll have a record of that. And then I, my opinion, it would be as we have a development come in that's within a mile of that. And I think it, it'll vary, there'll probably be negotiations depending on what that improvement is, and what type of project it is, and I don't, we're not nailing ourselves down here with any specific details, but we'll have the ability to negotiate that.
If it's a hot, an existing problem, but it's not tied to a new development, can we initiate it internally?
If I understand your, if I understand your question, yes, if we know there's an issue, we can say, as we're going through the next budget cycle, budget X amount of dollars to add a turning lane at, you know, Court Street. So, we can do that anytime, yes.
The other thing we need to do is also identify potential other sources of funding for these, because the county has many pots of money, the state has a lot of pots of money for different, different things. I mean, they're all separate, and we understand that. There's some for intermodal transportation, there's some for strategic, that CISO money is out there. And, you know, we need to try and make sure, and the NPO staff works on that a lot, so we'll make sure we get these to them, so they can identify funding sources as well. Because, look, we bear the brunt of it, but we don't, we're not necessarily all the cause of it. A lot of the surrounding areas are, but I am glad we're being proactive in doing this. So, we need to definitely share it with the county, and let them know that, what we're doing.
And we budgeted a million dollars for it.
Yeah.
So, we have a good start, and that's in this current budget.
Maybe, like you're saying, that can be used and partnered with another, whether it's the county or the state, to make more of that.
Well, and I know a lot of times, if we have the project somewhat ready to go, that, that helps, that helps. But it is, these are, I mean, these are large dollar items we're talking about, you know. It's, it's nothing for one of these intersections to be five million bucks, you know, really. Time, time you do it all, with the retention, everything, it's, it's, it is. I mean, these are big numbers, so we need some help with it.
And, and just to Councilman Spina's point, we did budget a million dollars this year, depending on timing and design and all that. I don't know that that, I know we can't spend a million, I don't know that we can spend any of that. And so, those dollars can be carried forward to the next year's budget, and make sure that is still in there.
Something like Purdy Pond, we could start the design process now, since we know we're, we're doing that.
So, Purdy Pond Wire Road is currently under design?
Well, for the left turn.
Oh, the left turn lane, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about Purdy Pond and three oh one.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, we could start that design now, since we know we wanna do that. I don't know how you initiate it.
We've talked about that.
But that's what I'm, I mean, what I wanna make sure is that we're talking about these in planning form, but we need to initiate them and get them off from the table to somewhere, and, and move ahead.
Right. And the other thing I failed to mention, not only the partner, the big partner's gonna be a developer coming in, that want, you know, that's, that's kind of, when we look at the, the different traffic studies, that they're, they're contributing to the improvement and the, that we're looking at.
Yep.
All right. Any, anything else?
Yeah, I just, I like the idea that you're gonna make it a lot easier to have them put turn lanes in. That's basically the biggest part of this.
Yeah, that's a big part of it, correct.
All right. And the staff and the planning commission recommended approval of this item, so-
I move, we approve the first reading of ordinance number one four seven four dash two four.
Now, second?
A motion and a second for approval of this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
If I may, we have two of our young planners, wanna brag on them a little bit, they're about finishing up their probationary period, and we're excited to bring them on off of probation. I think they're both doing an amazing job. You heard from Hunter tonight, and Tommy Lee, they're both just doing great jobs for the planning department. It's great to have some young blood in there. Rodney's been very beneficial in mentoring them both, so we're setting ourselves up to have good planning representation, even after I retire in the near future. So, just wanted to let y'all know how pleased we are with both of them.
Good.
How many years you got left, Todd?
Oh, I haven't counted down yet.
Don't let him lie to you, he knows exactly how many minutes he has left.
And the city manager reminded me of something that, I should ask for public comment on that item. Is there anybody who wants to speak to that item here tonight? Okay, seeing no one rise, I'm gonna go on to the next item, which is a citizen comment. Does anyone, anybody wanna speak to anything, or has anyone signed up to speak to anything tonight?
There's no one signed up to speak.
Does anyone care to speak to anything tonight?
Yeah.
Sure, we'll give you three minutes.
Can I use myself again?
Yes, you do.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Abad, proprietor of an old Italian restaurant. I'm back up here. What I wanna talk about, this was interesting here, there are some bad turns, like some, making a left turn off of three oh one into Fort King Road, that takes a year. Many times, I almost got clipped. A lot of people sees when you're turning, they speed up. They, they like that kind of stuff, very dangerous, very horrible there. I always came through there, and God always protected me. But it's always been very, very tough. Parking, parking is a huge issue in this whole area that you guys want to bloom and make look so good, and very busy for business. Parking is a huge issue. I would calculate the load of what everybody is allowed to have in their business, and counter, and count how many parking lots to see what the issue is. And, and you guys, you know, me and Steve have been talking about this for twenty years, about the parking situation. It would be awesome if we could do something to add more. I know the city, whole parking, my customers are welcome to park there, and anyone else, but in the evening, because no one's here, but we're in desperate need of parking in the downtown, for sure. Yeah.
Good, well, and, and thank you for bringing that up, and I know that's something we'll continue to work on, too, about connections, making a safe connection to and from downtown to the parking areas, too.
Another pandemic that we're facing, it's not the chickens or the cats here, but rather the bicycle riders, that we don't know who they are, where they are, if they're on drugs or not, doesn't matter. It's going on, the same issue on the sidewalks downtown. They're riding bikes, and people are speeding, regardless of the speed limit of twenty miles an hour and all that. So, the downtown needs a little attention when it comes to those kids speeding up.
Bike walks.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Well, thank you for letting us know, Joe. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one rise, I'll go on to the mayor announcements.
I just have a few little thank yous. I appreciate when I sent an email out this week, because I came across a really dangerous area that needed to be identified, and it was on a private parking lot, but the city staff, Shane, and Joel, and Ken, or Ken, no, Billy, they just stepped right in real fast and got that fixed for me, because that, I could not sleep when I came across that at eight o'clock at night, the night before. So, I appreciated that ability to be able to email, and then they are quick to answer the call. So, so, thank you for that. We did, we did go to Woodland Elementary to look at the new plans for the school, and, West Zephyr Hills Elementary, thank you. That would've been bad. Go backwards. West Zephyr Hills Elementary, a lot of us went to school there. So, it's kind of exciting to see the new plans for that, and watch for that to come. One of the biggest benefits we're gonna find is to get First Street to not be a parking lot at opening and closing of school. They're gonna, it's gonna be one of the first things that they do, is get that drop off down the street. So, and Rodney set me up with a breakfast with the planners, and we had a great breakfast. We spent two hours. They did work, they worked hard for me at that breakfast. And we, we talked about a lot of things that we wanna look at and see, and the depot was one of our conversations that we had. So, I appreciated Rodney doing that, because we have to build relationships with these people, and we have to trust who we, who we work with. And then my last thing was Shane came to COM, and I, Citizen of the Month, and I think he got to see how great it is.
I had a great time.
And, and I loved his comment of the good feeling, and to see the aspirations of these youth that we have in our city. We had a neurosurgeon that wants to be a neurosurgeon, we had many doctors, they wanted to be-
Pediatrician?
Pediatrician. So, it was really good to have his eyes open to that, and I, I invite you to come to Citizen of the Month on the third Wednesday at eight AM Chick-fil-A. So, anytime that you can come, I would love to have you come. So, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. City Manager announcements.
Just one, the good news is, you know, we went to Tallahassee this year, so in the state budget currently, pending the governor's veto, there is funding for Zephyr Park, and the amount of a million dollars, and for the Tucker Road infrastructure improvements. I believe that one was a million and a half dollars. So, those are currently in the budget, fingers crossed, prayers that governor does not veto. So, that's all I have for the seating.
Thank you, that is good news. All right, City Attorney's not here, so he probably doesn't have anything to say.
He has nothing to say.
City Council comments, let's talk down here with Dr. Spina.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple things. First, I would just like to thank Todd for introducing his young planners. I had the opportunity to go on a tour of the city with them, just show them different sites, and I enjoyed it very much, and enjoyed getting to meet them. We also went to the depots.
The moratorium we have in place right now will expire in three months. So, I think we need to start thinking about how we're gonna handle that. I know that we're expecting, I talked with the city manager today, and I know we're expecting a response from Swift Mud next month, but I still think we're not out of the woods in terms of water supply. And I think even if we get the permit limit that we hope to get, that we need to probably renew the moratorium for a little while, so that we can continue to look at options for additional use, for additional projects, if they come. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, we're halfway through the city budget, and we budgeted $300,000 for improvements to parks. And I would like to see the, I talked to the city manager about this also, I'd like to see the plans come before us, and start moving on a pavilion, construction of a pavilion at Cruisin Field. Now that the concession stand's been torn down and removed, the one request I've been getting from there, from the Z-PAL players and operators, is that they have a pavilion similar to what's at the skate park, and at other parks. So, I'd like to ask staff to start moving on that, so that we don't run out of the year, it goes quickly, and we start seeing some plans, and bids, and requests for, to get that moving. So, I'd like council to endorse that project, and I'd like to ask staff to get moving on it. And that's what I have.
Okay, thank you. And that's something we'll, you hope to bring up at a future meeting in the near, very near future, right? As far as the Cruisin, or do you want us to-
Well, I think the staff will be-
So, I think as a, as a staff, we've, you know, we are in the process of the Parks Master Plan. We did, Council, Councilman and I had a conversation today, we reached out to the consultant, they can look at the location, you know, and it's something that I had voices, making sure we get it in the right spot, so that as we move through this process, we don't have it in the wrong spot, and we have to move it or make do. So, the consultant, the consultant is able to give us location, kind of work with us, get that done. We have, I received a quote, a little dated, from when we did the skate park. So, we, you know, we have kind of a ballpark of what the cost will be. So, that's something that I think we can move forward on, if we can get that done.
And I think, I think you bring up a good point, because we're doing a master plan, and if you think about the time, length of the time it might take to actually implement them, we do need to do some smaller projects soon, very soon, so.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is that we're doing the master plan, we don't wanna upset the apple cart, but I think we have the vision to locate different things in different parks on our own. I think we can do things on our own. A pavilion's not a huge change to the park, and, and I think we need to look at the master plan, but we also need to listen to what citizens are asking us for and telling us. So, I'm just afraid, you know, half the year's gone, that I don't wanna see us in August not have anything accomplished. So, I'd like to get a move on it.
Thank you. Councilman Proctor?
Well, first of all, Councilman Spina, I am glad you brought up the fact about the moratorium. I definitely believe we are gonna have to take another look at it, and very soon. And also, I am, I'm very proud of our police department, for all that they've done this year, for them, for us to get consolidated now, that's gonna, with the dispatch, it's gonna make our citizens a lot safer, it's gonna make your job a lot better and easier, and it's gonna protect our officers. So, I think that's a really important thing, and it's something we've been working on a long time. So, I'm just glad to see that come to pass. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I interject real quick, just because moratorium was brought up twice? Just quick update, city responded to the Swift Mud's RAI, that was, I think, a week ago. So, Swift Mud has, I believe it's thirty days to respond-ish. So, we're hoping that we get our temporary permit, so that it goes before the committee. If not, if we get more questions, we'll respond to those and resubmit. So, that's where we are on that. The transportation impact fees, the park impact fees, and the public safety impact fees, that study was completed. And so, Kim Lee Horn and Clancy, I don't remember who he's with, subconsultant of Kim Lee Horn, who completed the study, so we will have ordinances, they will be writing up ordinances for us for transportation, public safety, and park impact fees, that will be brought before council. So, that hopefully will be before you by the end of April, for our first readings, review and first reading of those ordinances.
All right, thank you. Councilman Wilkinson?
Well, I was, I was sad to hear that at the, the chamber member of the year, for the, for the children, that nobody wanted to be a wastewater or utility worker for their future career. But, we definitely need them, and we want them. So, we've got to find a way to attract people to these great jobs that we offer for folks at, at our city. We have to be competitive, you know, we, we had a tremendous number of raises last year to really help our staff, you know, catch up with this inflation. But, that's part of the challenge, is that we really need to make these jobs attractive. The next thing on my list was also, thank you, Dr. Spina, for the Train Depot Museum, for, because even if we have to get public work, some additional help through short-term contracts or whatever, I think there's a water intrusion issue there at the depot, and I think that that place needs a little love, because it's getting more and more, more and more people are learning about the wonderful amenity that it is. And I think that, you know, Ms. Hillman is steadily leasing that out to prospective customers. So, I think we just need to, to give that a little bit more love if we can. Then, lastly, I was perusing through Facebook, and was, once again, misquoted, or there was misinformation floating around out there on the internet. And, and I hope that, I can count on Mr. Walters to, to correct this information, but I talked to our city manager regarding a report, a 2020 run report, as it related to an update on the EPA pump one monitoring at our fire station. Could you give us a little update on what progress has been made on that?
And, so I'll, I'll step back and I'll tell you that myself, HR and utilities director actually spoke today about how do we incentivize people to apply for our wastewater treatment plant positions, because we are extremely short-staffed there, so, sorry, I kicked up the trash can. So, we're working on trying to get those positions filled, so you're, kind of give you the history of where we are, or, you know, kind of where it started. So, April of 2014, the water was tested, our, our system was tested for PFOA and PFOS, those levels were below the advisory levels at that time, so everything was, all was good, April of 2014. May of 2016, the EPA lowered the health advisory limit for the PFOA and PFOS to 70 parts per trillion, so in June, the city retested the water, June of 2016, the city retested, sampled the water, one well had levels that were above the new allowable limits, and so the city removed that well from service. July of 2016, additional sampling was done and the levels were within the thresholds, so the well was put back into service. August of 2016, it was tested again, and the combined total for PFOA and PFOS was 140 parts per trillion, which is above the 70 parts per trillion, so it was removed once again from service. April of 2018, the well was officially capped and abandoned per Swift Mud regulations. Currently, we, as the city, are required per FDEP to regulate, or FDEPA, to regulate kind of a, an area, that was notification that was sent out, that's the, the, the NAMS, and that stands for...
Something.
I can't find it, John printed something for me and it's so small, I can't read it. Anyhow, it's, it's...
Continuing monitoring, just like monitoring.
Continuous monitoring.
Continuous monitoring, we have quarterly reports, part of what was approved this evening in the consent agenda, I believe it was for an additional $16,000, excuse me, $70,000 was for, to continuation of monitoring of the wells, they're, they're kind of stationed from here towards Zephyr, I say here, in the parking lot, fire station, Lake Necessity, towards Zephyr Park, so we're continuing to monitor those wells, and just as recently as a couple of weeks ago, we took samples, so we'll wait for those to come back, but we also continue to monitor the entire system and take samples from the entire system. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, EP, or DEPA, EPA are consistent, are constantly looking at what those levels are and those levels change. We will see a lot stricter regulations coming forward, I think, soon, as far as what those levels of PFOA and PFOS are allowed in the system, and so we are monitoring that, we're, we're preparing for that, planning for that, but as we speak today, our water is safe and is within the, the allowable limits that DEP and EPA have set.
And, and there's nothing that we're doing on a regular basis that's, that's contaminating the water, these are, this is a situation that happened 35 years ago or whatever, and we're just monitoring the conditions as they come?
Correct, correct, yeah, and, you know, and I think, this is my opinion, this is nothing from DP or anybody like that, you know, as, as growth continues, these PFOAs and PFOS are in everything that we use, the hamburger wrappers that you get from fast food, you know, that doesn't allow the, the grease to seep through, the, the special treatment that you put on your car seat so they don't stain when you drop the grease from the hamburger in your lap as you're driving, the carpets, you know, things, all of that has PFOA and PFOS, so as we develop more and more, you're going to see more intrusion into the ground because it is a forever chemical, so this is not something that's going away, and it's some, that's not something that I think is unique to Zephyr Hill, I know it's not unique to Zephyr Hills, so we continue to monitor and adapt to what the new rules are as they come about.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess?
And I want to thank Steve for bringing up the, the money and, for the parks, because I, and I keep on saying this, I want to use our money to buy stuff, I want to quit spending money to talk about stuff, and so thanks for bringing that up, Steve.
Design stuff.
Yeah, or to design stuff that never happens. And the other thing is, Joe brought up parking, and I know we've discussed the A Street connection for all of our downtown events, using, utilizing all these buildings here, and the parking, and we talked about doing some lighting and stuff. I think we need to probably do that because I've been to a lot of places where I've had to walk to restaurants, and it's coming from here or that parking lot across the street would be a really nice short walk, but as long as it's safe, feels safe, so I think we need to look, and I know we've discussed that, we need to look at maybe the lighting to make that feel safe so that people that are just literally two blocks away, but really a lot of parking in the evenings for, you know, maybe not, maybe not for our events, but for like just general evening things, so, and that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Especially that, especially that alleyway, that goes besides...
And, and I, I think you're right, I think, I think we need to do stuff, you know, I think we get paralyzed by planning these things and letting the consultants run the show, let's quit that, let's just go ahead and do it. We could make five mistakes and correct them by the time the planners get finished with their crap, so let's just do it, you know, just start doing stuff.
As long as you don't yell at us when we make that mistake.
Well, we're going to still yell at you, but hey, but at least we'll have...
You have a free in-house designer, so just ask.
We just, you know, we plan, I, we get paralyzed by it sometimes. I'd like to, we have a Swift Mud representative sitting back there hiding, so Amber, we're always glad to have you, Amber Smith from Swift Mud, she's the good one, she's not an enforcement person, she helps us, so she's, she's a good one from Swift Mud, we're always glad to have her.
Chief, good job working with Pasco County, I mean, I think it probably has improved the relationship already, and it's just going to continue to improve, so great job on that. We talked about, a little bit about our young planning staff we have, we, that is the future, guys, us old guys are going out, the new people are coming in, young people are, have energy, we don't have energy like we did, do we, Joe? Sometimes, no, we don't, do we? But, but, but we don't, so we need these young people around us, and honestly, when the young people are around you, sometimes you get a little bit of, more energy, you get more juice, you know, so it, it's a good thing. And the other thing we can have, we can have the greatest loader, we can have the greatest garbage truck, we can have the greatest sewer plant in the world, but if we don't have the people to run it, it ain't worth a darn, you know, so we have to have the qualified people and good people to run it. I'm going to keep saying this too, these young people now want hybrid jobs, we need to look and see what jobs can be, become hybrid, and somebody might say, well, you know, they're at the house, they're not doing anything, how the heck you know if they're doing anything if they're in their office? Sometimes, it's because they produce, you know, I'm being serious, how do you know they're doing it? It's because they turn out work, so that can be measured, so anyway, that's my soapbox for the night.
Flexibility, fore-ten, or whatever, yeah.
My girls, my girls all, my daughter just took a hybrid job, she works remotely five days a week, loves it, and that's, you know, that's, it's going that way, it's going that way, so we gotta, we gotta adapt with the times, if we don't, we're going to become like the dinosaurs, okay, meetings, journey.
Hey, Joe, don't run off.